Commissioners, is your...
Let's start over. Good evening, everyone. Order of the August 21st, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Commissioner Elmore, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible.
Thank you. Staff, roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present with the exception of Chair Harris and Commissioner Rosin, who are excused this evening.
Thank you. All right, so number four, this is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Any... Please state your name.
My name is Jim Carlson. I'm an architect, lived in Newport Heights for 45 years. I'm concerned about the notification distance. I've complained about this before, but 300 feet is not enough for...
Sir, this is, this item will be called, and so you'll go ahead and speak on the item when it comes forward.
I will. But I'd like to just also just talk about the notification process in general, because I think it's inadequate for the 300 feet. San Diego's 500 feet, LA's 500 feet. I think it's a state mandate, but I think it should be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other public comments? None. Moving on to the next item, request for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
Vice Chair.
Excuse me, that was closed.
I'm sorry.
I raised my hand back. No, I don't think anybody saw.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Or you, did you have a non-agenda item?
Yes. My name is Lisa Sutton. I'm a long-term resident of Corona del Mar, and I just wanted to make a couple of public comments regarding the Corona del Mar Commercial Corridor Study, which I think will have significant impact on the city. And I went to the meeting that was held at the Oasis on the 12th, and I was somewhat taken back and surprised at the extent of that corridor study and the way the level of public awareness was brought to the community. And it's such a large-scale impact project that I would like to go on record, as you're saying, I think it's something that as it moves forward, that residential and long-term resident impact is considered deeply in these major discussions, especially as it relates to potential for rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on non-agenda items? All right, moving on. Request for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
None tonight.
I remember four, the minutes of the August 7th, 2025 meeting. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes from the August 7th meeting? Seeing none, call for motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes with the exception of changing the Mr. Lindsay corrected Mr. Moser sentence to Mr. Lindsay noted. I think that's a better characterization of what happened there. I kind of felt the same way as Mr. Moser, I read his message to our Planning Commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Elmore abstaining.
Okay, moving on to public hearing items. This is item number two, the Arc Carne and Cantina Restaurant, PA 2025-0057, located at 2902 West Coast Highway. Mr. Recusing.
Vice Chair, thank you. I just wanted to declare for the record that Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Chair Harris is recusing based on a real property interest.
Thank you. Staff, please proceed with presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Jenny Tran, and I'm a planner for this project for Arc Carne and Cantina Restaurant. So this project is located at 2902 West Coast Highway. The project also includes the larger parcel highlighting green behind the property, and these two properties together, under the same ownership, make up the Garden Shopping Center. Additional in this project includes the two areas highlighted in yellow. One is 2912 West Coast Highway, which belongs to Sterling BMW, and 215 Riverside Avenue, which is developed with a couple of commercial uses. I just want to make a quick note in the staff report, the area, the arrow for 2912 West Coast Highway was pointing to the wrong property. It was pointing to the subject property, but it is showing correctly in this image here. So this project includes a conditional use permit. This conditional use permit is for the implementation of a new fine dining restaurant. And with that new restaurant, there's a request for a type 47 ABC license. There's also a request for late hours, meaning any hours occurring after 11:00 PM. In this case, the restaurant is proposing hours between 8:00 AM and midnight, and it also includes the provisions for off-site parking, which was seen in the slide before. Because of the request for an ABC license with late hours, an operator's license is required. However, this is an application with, that is approved through the Newport Beach Police Department. This also includes a major site development review, as the project includes a request to increase the base height up to 35 feet for a flat roof and 40 feet for a slope roof, and includes a coastal development permit to review the intensification of use from an existing retail building to a new restaurant, and also to analyze the increase in base height. And finally, the project includes a traffic study, as the project does create a net increase of over 300 average daily trips. For the new restaurant, as previously stated, the current use on-site is a retail shell building. It was renovated for retail, but has since been vacant since the renovations, and they are proposing a new restaurant in its place. The gross floor area of the restaurant is 6,874 square feet. It includes a third-floor rooftop outdoor dining area, that's approximately 1,737 square feet. The hours of operations, as previously stated, is between 8:00 AM and midnight daily. No live entertainment or dancing is proposed as part of the project, but it does include the proposal for an ABC license. In analyzing the parking for the restaurant, a rate of one parking space per 100 square feet of gross floor area and one parking space per 150 square feet of outdoor dining area was used to determine the required parking. So for Arc Restaurant itself, 81 parking spaces are required. The project did analyze the garden as a whole, and the parking required for both Arc Restaurant and the bigger parcel of the garden is 171 parking spaces. On-site, 158 parking spaces are provided, and the project will propose off-site valet parking with a distinction between daytime and evening off-site parking. Since the off-site parking will take place on Sterling BMW's property, as well as 215 Riverside, where there are commercial uses operating during the daytime, more parking will be available in the evening when those, when those businesses are closed. So during the daytime hours, 61 off-site parking spaces will be provided, whereas in the evening, 76 parking spaces were provided. In total, the minimum total parking provided is 219, and the maximum parking provided is 234, which is well over the minimum required of 171 for the garden. In implementing the off-site parking, the project will use valet operations for the off-site locations. So this shows the green arrows, which is the self-parking circulation for onsite, if patrons would like to park onsite on the garden and use self-parking versus valet. But if they choose to choose the valet parking options, the arrows in purple shows the circulation for valet, where valet operation staff will take the cars from the site to the two off-site locations of Sterling BMW and 215 Riverside, using Avon Street to access these sites versus using West Coast Highway for the circulation. So all of the circulation for the valet will be through Avon and will not impact West Coast Highway, and further will not impact any public parking spaces within the coastal zone. The project includes a site development review for the request in height increase. So the base height for the property as of now is 26 feet for a flat roof and 31 feet for a slope roof. With the approval of a site development review, the maximum height will increase to 35 feet for a flat roof and 40 feet for a slope roof. The project is proposing a height of 34 feet for a flat roof and just 30, and 35 feet for a slope roof. So the exhibit below shows in gray is the area of the existing building as it is now, and in the pink color is the area of the addition for the third-floor rooftop dining area. The blue line shows the line of 35 feet, and the green line shows the line of 40 feet. So as you can see, the project is built up to about 35 feet, but it won't be built up to the 40 feet maximum with the site development review. And I just want to point out that little area to the right is an elevator that although it is, it is flat and goes above 35 feet, it is allowed per the Newport Beach Municipal Code because it's for the elevator shaft. The project includes a coastal development permit, and this is to, for the conversion of the building from retail to restaurant, which is considered an intensification of use, as well as the increase in required parking that was previously analyzed. It also considers the increase in height and consideration of coastal views within the coastal zone. And the nearest coastal viewpoint to the property in the bottom right, that image shows the subject property in relation to the nearest coastal viewpoint, which is Cliff Drive Park up on the hill by Cliff Drive. So the larger image is taken from the street view of Cliff Drive, which is the most impactful point of the coastal view. So this shows the existing building, and shaded in yellow is the area of the proposed addition, which is a rendering showing how that third floor would look. And as you can see, the third floor does not create more of a visual impact for the coastal view than what is already impacted, impacted by the existing development along West Coast Highway. Further, the third floor does include glass guardrails and the glass roof canopy, just to decrease any visual impact that could be created by the third-floor rooftop deck. The project also includes a traffic study because the project will create a net increase of over 300 average daily trips. A traffic study was prepared by LSA, and it concluded that no impacts to the eight nearby intersections will occur, and therefore no further mitigation is required in relation to traffic. We did receive public comments for the project, and these concerns were related to noise from rooftop dining, late hours until midnight, parking, and traffic. So first to look at the rooftop dining area, this exhibit shows the floor plan for the third floor. On the very left in yellow is the customer area. This is closer to West Coast Highway, where the customers will be seated. And then in blue is the back-of-house circulation, including the elevator and stairs to get up to the third-floor rooftop deck. And the area in gray is the existing building, where there will be no development of the third floor. And this area of the building is closer to the back of the property, where it gets closer to Cliff Drive. So as you can see, the third-floor rooftop dining areas look in the front half of the building, and even further, the customer area is oriented towards West Coast Highway versus toward the back of the building, where it's closer to the residence. We did include condition of approval number 16, where all noise generated by the project shall comply with the provisions of Chapter 10.26 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, which has requirements for despot levels in the daytime and nighttime hours. In addition, condition of approval number 43 is included to prohibit any live entertainment and dancing, so any noise that could be contributed to live entertainment and dancing are prohibited for the restaurant, including the third-floor rooftop area. Related to traffic, parking, and congestion, the restaurant will provide off-site valet parking beyond the minimum required, as was previously analyzed. Public works also reviewed the traffic study and found there to be no impacts. All loading and unloading shall occur onsite, so any deliveries for the restaurant shall be onsite versus in all along West Coast Highway or any public right-ofways. And the site also does provide two righteous spaces to allow for drivers to queue onsite, whether they're dropping off or picking up patrons at the restaurant, instead of queuing in the public right-ofways. We also included conditions of approval number five, where the applicant or property owner shall maintain the, maintain the minimum required parking spaces for the garden, which does include Arc Restaurant. And condition of approval number 35, where restaurant employees shall not park on public right-ofways. Employees should be using the available parking onsite, rather than parking in a public right-ofway off-site somewhere else. Staff is recommending the following actions to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA under Class 3 and Class 32 of the CEQA guidelines, and to adopt Resolution Number PC 2025-016 to approve the conditional use permit, major site development review, coastal development permit, and traffic study. Thank you. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is also available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tran. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Langford.
Thank you, Vice Chair Celine. Thank you, Ms. Tran, for the presentation. I've got two quick questions. First is one of the conditions of approval, number 36. I just wanted to get your rationale for it. I was just curious. It's the, the off-site valet parking lot shall only be used during the restaurant hours of operation.
Over that condition, we wanted to make sure the valet was available during the duration of the restaurant, which is 8:00 AM to midnight. We just didn't want there to be a case where they only provide valet from 10:00 to 10:00, for example, and some of the hours aren't accounted for. That was the reason for the condition.
Okay. Shall only be used during restaurant hours of operation. All right. Yeah, it didn't read that way to me. I guess my second, my second question is the distinction between the third, what we're calling the third floor and what the applicant talks about, having a first floor, a mezzanine, and a roof. Is there any distinction that we need to make? Is there anything that changes in the code with that? Or are they just interchangeably used, as far as we're concerned?
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner. In this, in this case, the focus is on the height and the compliance with the height limit when it comes to zoning standards. And then in terms of building code, there will be additional implications during a plan check process.
Okay. So is there, does, do we, does the staff and applicant have a disagreement on whether it's a third floor or a second floor, like roof deck? Because you see where I'm getting at with this? Because she's calling kind of like mezzanine level.
So the, my understanding is there's a mezzanine inside the restaurant? Right, so the mezzanines are not floors. They're, they're called, they're designated by the building code as mezzanine.
Right.
There are two floors, but there could be three levels. Right, because you're mezzanine, it could be a second level, and then the rooftop is your third level. But, but from a building code standpoint, it's a two-story building.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Langford. Anyone else? I just had, I had a quick question. I know, I saw somewhere in here that if, because they have an agreement with the off-site valet parking operator is Sterling BMW in 215. But I, is there a condition here that requires that if those agreements go away, that something else has to happen? I did, I'm looking for it now, and I don't seem to see it, to find it.
So, Vice Chair Celine, so the, looking at condition number 10.
10, thank you.
That talks about the operational characteristics, and I would say that if you're, don't have your parking agreement, then your use permit doesn't, is not, no longer valid. You got, you got to be able to park the place.
Sorry, I'm now looking at condition six, does talk specifically about a parking agreement. Sorry, I hadn't got to, got to that yet. Excuse me. Okay. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, any ex parte communication? Starting on my left, Commissioner Reed.
Sure, with the applicant.
I spoke with the applicant and also some nearby residents.
Spoke with the applicant.
Spoke with the applicant as well.
Spoke with the applicant.
Thank you. Okay, I will open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Please state your name.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Marin van Blom, and I am delighted to be here, representing Arc Carne and Cantina. Thank you so much for this opportunity to meet with you, and I'm very excited about the project. And thank you to the city staff. I know it's been a long time for the project, almost two years. So we're grateful for all of your hard work. Thank you so much. We are in absolute support of all staff recommendations, and I'm here to answer any other questions you may have about the project. I did submit these to the city clerk yesterday, so this is a little representation of what the exterior of the building hopes to look like. As you can see, we kind of like preserve the exterior as it is. It's such a beautiful building, and we add a little bit of a rooftop element that is, I think visually, very appealing. A little bit about the restaurant. Sorry, I don't know why it's so nerve-wracking. I watch the city council meetings all the time. I'm like, that room's not scary, and I'm in here, I'm freaking out. So, about Arc, it's a high-end Mexican and Central and South American concept. It goes beyond just being a place to eat. We really see it as kind of a catalyst for the corridor, the social culture of Newport Beach, and a lot of economic growth that can happen there. And we've thoughtfully designated the restaurant, designed the restaurant, and our philosophy is always rooted in excellence. We really strive to be great operators, provide amazing food. You know, our friends, our family eat there, so we really always want to do our best job. The project reflects and supports the quality of life that we all cherish here in Newport Beach, and we really envisage this, envision this restaurant as a vibrant community gathering space and a landmark destination that we can all be proud of. We are proven operators in the community and adjacent community of Costa Mesa. We do have three other, well, two other operating locations, and one that's currently about to open in Newport Beach. Our restaurant, Arc Food and Libations, opened in 2013 in Costa Mesa. If you can believe it, it's been open 13 years. And when we first opened, it was hailed as one of the most important restaurants to open in the last decade. So we had wonder, and that was by critic, food critic Brad A. Johnson for the Orange County Register. Since then, we've opened Arc Butcher and Baker, which is in the Canary Village District. And it is just, really fits the neighborhood, and it kind of has become a local staple for families. We always target our projects towards the community and the neighborhood that they're in. So our project on Belbo Island is different than our project in Canary Village, and it's going to be a little bit different than Carne and Cantina. And what just kind of popped up behind you is the interior of the restaurant. We really do see this as kind of our flagship and something that the community can be wowed by. And also, when we have friends and family that come in, we really want to showcase what we can do. You know, we are actually cooler than LA, and LA's not cool anymore, so we have the opportunity to one-up them, and I think this could be the spot that everyone really wants to see. So, we are restaurateurs first and foremost. We're not bar operators, and I think that's why the mezzanine-level bar was the most important thing for us. We didn't want a ground-floor bar. We wanted, when you walked in, you saw people dining, you saw families, you saw fun and gathering, and then upstairs is where the bar is, so that way it's like a secondary piece, and that really emulates our philosophy, that it's a complement to the dining experience. It's not the, the focus. It reinforces that we are serious restaurateurs and not bar operators. We've also made an exhaustive effort to ensure that the restaurant is fully parked, as they present, the staff presented so eloquently. And we have requested zero parking waivers as well. We do believe that the project is conducive with the area. It's similar in use to other projects in the area, and will be a cultural landmark for Newport Beach. I would be happy to answer any additional questions that the Commission has at this time. Thank you so much for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you very much. I think you mentioned it, but I just want to make sure that you agree with the recommended conditions.
Absolutely. We agree with all staff recommendations.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, are there any other comments? Anybody else like to speak on this? Please state your name.
Thank you. Yes, I would. I'm Brennan Cassidy, and I live up on Cliff Drive, across the street from Cliff Drive Park. And in the staff report, you'll see a photo from Cliff Drive Park that is very close to what I see from my master bedroom to the rooftop, which is 165 yards from my master bedroom. So I'm concerned about the, the noise that would occur, and whether it's live music or recorded music, it's not the, the important factor. It's really the hot number of decapelluses that are produced by the music and how loud it is. Customers also can create more noise, and that would, that would be a concern of myself and all of my neighbors up on Cliff Drive. We hear, the prevailing winds come off the bay, for the most part, most of the year, almost all the year, sometimes Santa Ana winds will change that, but the wind brings the noise up, up to the top of the cliff. From boats in the Turning Basin, they play music, usually not loud music, uh, live music, but recorded music. And it's very loud when it gets all the way up. Fortunately, the boats aren't there permanently, so that's not much of a concern. They cruise down the bay, and that's, that isn't no longer an issue. I'm concerned about the hours being open till midnight. That's pretty late, even for most restaurants that I've been to. In recent years, they're closing long before that, or because of the customers are leaving. But I would also say that if this has to be approved, there are some mitigating factors that could be included to reduce the noise impact. Obviously, music and how loud it is, and the hours of operation until midnight. If that could be reduced, that would be helpful. Most people are in bed before midnight in my neighborhood. And the last thing is, could I ask you to put that photo of the drawing of the outside of the restaurant up again?
Okay. That's fine.
And I don't know if you recall that on top, that, that structure on top, which looks like a glass covered or glass roof, is that part of the project? Is that a permanent fixture there?
We're, we're not here to, 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 to questions and answers. This is just for comments.
Okay, well, I, I will say that if that is part of the structure, then mitigating the noise could be very easily done by connecting that structure to the walls of the building there, and, and that would prevent the noise from traveling straight up to our homes.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Moser.
Vice Chair Celine, and members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Moser. First, I had, I think, three technical comments regarding the noticing, Mr. Carlson previously mentioned in general whether 300 feet is adequate. And my question specific to this project is the staff report says that the noticing was to properties within 300 feet of the project site. And in a case like this, where the project involves off-site parking, are those parking off-site areas also regarded as part of the site? So that people within 300 feet of those were noticed? Because, as the gentleman said here, they, they might be impacted not only by the restaurant, but also by the parking at midnight. Second comment is condition of approval number six about the parking agreement. I, I notice it's written in the singular, and I believe there would be two separate parking agreements with two separate off-site owners. So shouldn't that condition be in the plural rather than singular? And then condition of approval number 27 has to do with the expiration of the permit, and it actually, it duplicates a part of condition of approval number four, which more extensively says how the permit will expire. Substantively, I, I did want to comment on the noise concerns, and I should reveal that I am a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, and actually the chair of the subcommittee that's reviewing the noise element of our general plan, but I'm speaking here totally as an individual. And my two comments, one of them is kind of echoing the previous speaker. Condition of approval number seven is setting the hours of operation from 8:00 AM to 12:00 midnight. I thought it was customary, when you had an outdoor dining area, that the hours were shorter for the outdoor dining area than they are for the main indoor restaurant to alleviate noise concerns. And then condition of approval number 19 is prohibiting the use of an outdoor paging system. And it would seem to me, if we're concerned about an outdoor paging system, we would also be concerned about amplified music in the outdoor dining area. And I would think there would, should be some restrictions on that. And just relying on the municipal code and somebody calling code enforcement at midnight, And just relying on the municipal code and somebody calling code enforcement at midnight, I don't think provides a great deal of comfort to your fellow Newport Beach residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's David Finch, Vice Chair Celine, Planning Commissioners and staff. I'm a longtime resident of Newport Heights neighborhood, actually since 1977. I'm here tonight to express my strong support for this proposed new restaurant by Noah and Marin van Blom. As you already know, they already own two successful restaurants, and their track record shows they know how to create quality dining experience that enriches a community like ours. This project is a chance to bring some new life and energy to our neighborhood. I truly believe that. Some neighbors and friends of mine have expressed to me noise concerns, but the location fronts PCH. And then there's a shopping center, BMW dealership, and Cliff Drive Park. There's no live entertainment, there's no dancing, and in my opinion, the noise from Taco Bell, McDonald's, maybe the Whaler, creates a lot more noise than this restaurant ever would. This is exactly the kind of thoughtful investment, and it's an investment Newport Beach deserves, and I think should have. I urge you to approve it, and welcome with open arms Noah and Marin's vision into our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
I'm Jim Carlson again. And we were concerned very much about the traffic, getting in and out of there, because it's very difficult, and the speeds along the West Coast Highway are excessive. There's major accidents weekly, because I live above there. We're also concerned about the noise from the, from the rooftop deck, and we're concerned about the public views from the parks and the public views from, from the other, the bayfront and the other waterways and things like that. I did notice when I wrote this about the coastal development permit, it needs to be required. And the notification, again, I talked about that, this is a general matter. It needs to be, especially for projects like this, it needs to be increased. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Hi there, Jeff Schroeder. I'm a longtime resident of Newport Beach, born in Oak Hospital, 1976, and grew up here, lived here my whole life, and opened and operated the Wine Gallery in Cronomar. Curtis, how are you? And I've been a restaurateur for 18 years in the city, and now I'm working in the hospitality restaurant business, and I have had the pleasure of working with Marin and Noah van Blom for many years now. And they are the most impressive restaurateurs I've seen in this area, most creative, and I think the future of Newport Beach. And so I just wanted to speak on behalf of what they're doing. I think they're very, very impressive. And if you want to add to the charm of our community, these are the people to do it. Marin is so incredible with her design work, and they will deliver the most incredible product to our city. And I think adding charm to our town, especially like longtime local residents that actually really care about the city, is very important to me. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Please state your name for the record.
Hi, yes, Teddy Featheroff. I'm actually here representing Eckham Pilates. We are located right across from where this restaurant will be opening up. I am representing also for Vanessa Bourne, who is the owner, and I'm just going to read the letter that she sent to me, which I fully agree with. She doesn't usually write letters like this, but after learning about the Arc project, she felt moved to share her support, and she thanks you also for your time and what you do. She is a resident and the founder of Eckham Yogan Pilates, and just a block away. She believes the restaurant will be a great addition to Mariners Mile, much like we've heard already before. It'll bring new life to a space that's been sitting empty for far too long. And, you know, as a business owner on the same street, she sees every day how important it is where there are priorities that are like activated in thoughtful ways, you know, versus just wasting space, time, money, resources. She's heard concerns about the noise, which I have this evening, but from her experience being right on PCH every day, that doesn't feel like the real issue. The street has already, constant traffic carries a lot of background noise and activity, pedestrian also, and one fine dining restaurant, restaurant being the operative word, won't change that. Unlike nightlife venues, this project isn't proposing live music or dancing. It's designed to be a dining experience with its rooftop oriented towards the highway, so not the homes behind it, which has, I know, been a concern, a fear, from the other residents on Cliff and in the Heights. But she feels confident it will blend seamlessly into the existing environment, and she respectfully encourages you to follow these staff's recommendation and approve the Arc project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
How are you? My name's Paul Sampson. I live up in Newport Heights, right above the project. I'm also a customer of Arc and one of the greatest restaurants we have in the area. I think this project, like the lady just said, you know, that building's been sitting empty for quite some time. That's one of the best little shopping centers in all of Newport, with Stacy Bone and everything we have in there. And I don't, really don't see, the biggest noise we have to deal with up in the Heights up there, where I live, is the ambulance going back and forth. I mean, that, that radiates through the area. We had concerns about the Whaler, and, you know, I outwalk my dog almost every night, and you could barely hear any, any of the noise that they put off since they face this PCH. So, I think this would be a great project, offer great jobs, and we're looking forward to it opening. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, good evening, Erica Carson. Born and raised here in Newport Beach, fellow restaurant owner as well. My husband and I own Bear Flag Fish Company, and so we are very familiar about how much it does take to go into business and keep it local and keep the vision that both the Blooms are looking to do. We also live right down the street in Mariners Mile. We're on the steep hill, Tustin Avenue. We do have children ourself, and we are completely supportive for this restaurant. We're excited to have something that we can walk to dinner. That's a good family restaurant, that isn't, I mean, the Whaler, yes, has its pros and cons, but it is more of a bar scene, and we're excited to have something that we can take our family to and walk down the street and have good food. And the traffic and the parking looks fine for me. I was kind of a little concerned for that, but seeing that, it looks fantastic, and we're excited to have another local restaurant by them, and we know they'll do a great job. So we're supportive for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Please state your name for the record.
Donnie Bellows. Thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to speak out positively about Noah and Marin's projects that they've been running. I've been lucky to be friends and work with them over the last 10 to 12 years on both of their projects. If anybody here has had the opportunity to go, I think you would understand just how fantastic they are. Great community spots to go enjoy, whether it's, you know, family or a date night. I'm a longtime Newport Beach resident, 40 years. Born and raised, live up in Dover Shores currently. Very much looking forward to this project. So I would just encourage you to give it the green light and pass it along. And again, thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing none. Does the applicant like, would you like to respond to any of the comments? No? Okay. Does staff have any comments for the record?
Thank you, Vice Chair Celine. Just a couple of comments. Just want to circle back with regards to traffic. We did do a traffic analysis. There was no impacts. With regards to parking, there's more than enough parking that was already shared with the Commission, and there's actually a surplus of parking from the valet standpoint. Our acting traffic engineer, Kevin Riley, is here, sitting next to Ms. Summerhill, and so he can answer any additional questions that you may have, either on the traffic or the parking. With regards to public views or coastal views, we had that simulation up for, for you, that rendering on the screen. We found there was no blockage of the public coastal views. With regards to noise, this is a restaurant. It's not a bar. They didn't apply for live entertainment or amplified sound, and we felt that the, the noise, the ambient noise from PCH is pretty much going to drown out whatever comes off this restaurant building. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this time I'll close the public hearing and bring this item back to the Commission for discussion and action. Commissioners? Commissioner Elmore?
So we're a technical body, not a body of opinions, if you will. You know, I take a look at the, the primary factors, which we would look at, which is sound, to staff's comment. This is a restaurant. I understand sound off party boats can, can be different than sound for a restaurant. So I don't, I don't see the comparison there. And then the sound studies, I think, are accurate. Hours of operation, we find, are with, are compliant. I don't, we don't see any issues there. I don't see any issues there. Traffic, I think we just talked about, and the view corridors, I think we, we discussed. So I, with all those, I think it's a very clean application. I'm in support of that and happy to make a motion to approve.
Mr. Linkford?
Thank you. I just want to say, I think the project is thoughtful, beautiful, great addition to the community. I love that it would be operated by locals who can be responsive to feedback. The, the one change that I would request is in condition seven about the hours of operation. It says the hours of operation shall, so I would, I would change shall to may to give the operator flexibility, so they don't have to be open from 8:00 to 12:00, but they may be open from 8:00 to 12:00. And then also add at the end, and through 1:00 a.m. on New Year's Eve. I was married on New Year's Eve, so that's kind of a sticking point for me.
Any other comments? Commissioners?
No. With that, well, so I believe I made the motion, but with the motion...
I'll second your motion.
Yeah, and with my motion, just for staff, I'm happy to make the modifications that Commissioner Linkford said, so change the word shall to may on, on number seven and the 1:00 a.m. on New Year's Eve.
If I may, Commissioners, the, we talk about in condition seven is the operation shall be between. So you can definitely open later, say if the, they want to open at 11:00 o'clock, they can easily do that under this condition, or if they want to close earlier, they can easily do that with this condition. And I bring that up because the, these, this use permit runs with the land. So it's not just this operator, it's all the future operators. So I, I think you can open later and close earlier. You're not obligated to be open. It's just during the hours, your hours of operation are just limited on the front end and the back end. We have no concerns about the, the New Year's Eve issue, the New Year's Eve hours.
So, so back to that, I think then we're all speaking on the same, we're all reading on the same sheet of music here. So I'm, I'm okay with the language on seven, but include the 1:00 a.m. on New Year's Eve. And that'd be my motion.
Okay. So everybody's motion, and everybody's second?
I second.
Okay. Call for a vote.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Okay, moving on to the next item. Item three has been removed from the agenda, so we'll move on to item eight, or motion for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? None? Okay. Item number five, report by the Community Development Director for matters which the Planning Commission member would be liked on the future minute agenda.
Thank you, Vice Chair Celine. We have, our next Planning Commission meeting on September 4th is going to be the item, the public hearing item for the Snug Harbor Surf Parks. We know there's a lot of community concern for that item, so that'll be on September 4th. And then finally, this is going to be my last meeting with you. So I am transitioning to the City Manager's office. Jaime Mario, who's typically the deputy director here, attends the Planning Commission meeting, he's going to be serving as acting Community Development Director starting September 2nd. And so if he, unless he needs me, you won't be seeing me at these meetings.
Well, congratulations, and you will be missed.
Thank you so much.
Well deserved. Congratulations, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the audience want to comment on this? Okay, item number six, request for excused absences. Are there any requests for excused absences? Everyone will be here September 6th, September 4th? Fourth? Good, excellent. And we are adjourned.